All right, thank you all for being with us this evening. This is our first council meeting for the month of October. I'd like to ask Councilman Gaines to say a prayer followed by the pledge by Councilman McGilvery.
Let us all stand. Let us pray. Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We come to you, oh Lord, thank you for your many, many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for the state of Mississippi. We thank you, Lord, for all what you do for each and every one of us. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor and all the students that came out tonight. We ask, call in Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank everybody for that. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. A motion by Mr. Gaines, a second by Mr. McGilvery. Any discussion? All in favor of suspending the rules? You'll need to state your name and your vote. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about the...
No, are you voting? Are you voting?
George, would you... George, hang on. Right now, we're suspending the rules. That's all we're doing. Right, okay, but first... Right, but first, we have to suspend the rules. So, all right, that's an eye for Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gaines?
McGilvery, aye.
Tisdale, yes?
Yea, Glavine.
And Mr. Shoemaker? Okay, so that's approved on a six-o vote. All right, if the clerk would read the revisions, please.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5J exhibits only. Resolution authorizing boat berth rental agreement between the city and MSU Research Center for pier space at Biloxi Small Craft Harbor. Substituting 5cc. Resolution to adjust compensation for the Legislative Department. Adding 5dd. Resolution amending budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, to provide sufficient funds for the Maritime and Seafuze Museum's repair and maintenance costs.
All right, is there any discussion? Mr. Lawrence, if you wish... Okay, so right now, the only revisions we have are what the clerk read, correct? All right, I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Subute.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, is there a second?
A second.
By Mr. McGilvery.
He wants to pull F?
No, we're not pulling F right now.
Okay.
Is that correct? We're not pulling F right now, okay. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of the approved amended agenda? Mr. Lawrence?
Aye. Gaines, aye. McGilvery, aye.
Tisdale, aye.
Glavine, aye.
All right, so it's approved on a six-o vote. For the clerk, that being the case, that brings us to the presentation agenda and the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome everyone to our October's first...
Mayor's report, George.
Welcome everyone to our October meeting and my great pleasure...
My understanding was, we had a discussion on anything that was going to be added to the revisions.
I try to understand, but you didn't accept what I was trying to say.
Right, well, when we get to that item on the agenda, we'll have further discussion on that, George. It's all we can do at this point. Okay, if the... All right, Mr. Lawrence. If the clerk would notice that Ms. Newman is in attendance. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, continue with your report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome everyone again. It's a great pleasure for us to interest our new mayor's council. I've got the very strongest we've ever had. I'll ask everyone to stand up. Everybody's part of our mayor's council. Thank you, what a great crowd. They had their first orientation meeting this morning and a few minutes ago. And they had, I think, an enjoyable and informative time. So, thank y'all, appreciate being here with us and everyone else. This is our first, this is a new fiscal year for our council. And so, this is the beginning of our happy new year, FY 2425. One more item, please, spread the expenses of the Biloxi Travel Club, travel card, credit card to the minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, that brings us to the council report. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple things. I've got the Terry Bell, Senator Dixie, the Mariposa, those three that were staying on town. I have that done. I hope we get the new equipment inside of Mariposa off. That make it head of that track to the beach. Also, take the kids later on point. I just replaced the sponge bed and the concrete. There's just something needs to be done as far as the O shoe fork we have as well as the question. So, we definitely need to find, follow on that. And on the side roads on Howard Ave and stuff like that off the side streets, are they cleaned yet? Because there was a lot of dirty grass going through the walls and everything. I was just wondering if you got some...
They're working on it.
On all those streets on Howard Ave?
Yeah, the crews are taking care of a lot of things that before the crews in the coast. So, I think they're paying attention to that. But it's on the list and we'll get to it.
I mean, crews are still, so it's not done?
We're trying.
Yeah, but that's the, they're expecting all the meaningful people coming into town. We don't have our street sort of on that, right? Anyway, that's, I was hoping that we're done. We're gonna look into it, we're gonna be the done. That should be done already. And on that equipment tree outside of the toaster, Joey, that's not, but I hope that is. Are you gonna get that paid?
It's on the list.
The list is listed, we're just listed to 2028 now. We don't know if it is listed.
Well...
We keep saying the list, but it never happens. I mean, that's the biggest tree on that, where I started, those two. I mean, that's something, got the bigger trees to get paid.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Gaines.
Yes, first, I want to thank all the students for coming on out. And I hope you guys have a great and wonderful, enjoyable time. Just want to make a little quick report on the Civil Liberties Banquet. We had a great time this weekend, Saturday, in honor of all our guests. So, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines, Ms. Newman.
Do we have an update on the Broadwater property?
Well, not the Broadwater property, but all around. I think we've been, especially some of the property has not been cleared behind the... Off of the Pass Road property and just north of what has been cleared. We're working on some of the issues that are going on with that. And we continue to, you know, I guess, police and do some of the things we need to do is, you know, to kind of control some of the problems that have been popping up even since we cleared most of their property.
From what I take it from the citizens, it's getting worse again. So, if we can get a handle on it and put some pressure on the owners to clean up the west side. Because I hear that the homeless are going back to that location, saying that nothing's going to be done.
Well, you know, there's no trespass on that. So, we do have the ability to achieve to get onto the property and remove those folks that are not supposed to be there.
Okay.
There was one individual that wouldn't heed to the warnings. We did take to jail. The rest of them have moved on that did come back. It's a daily, daily thing that we have to go out there. A little bit further down west on Pass Road, we had some property there where some of them moved to. We've addressed that as well as some of the trash that they left behind. And then, we're working with some of the property owners down that way.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Mr. Creel and Mr. Abayd, if you would meet with me in the back room as soon as the meeting's over with, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery.
Just a couple of things. The issues out at the soccer fields across from Margaret Sherry, we had a problem a couple of weekends ago, parking issues. We got that addressed. Police Department did an outstanding job. Parking Recreation, along with the Traffic Committee, getting those signs really helped. And everybody heeded the warning, so we didn't have any issues there. It went well. The strapping of the turn lanes and things like that in front of the Margaret Sherry in both directions working well. I think every other day or so, they're spreading out, repainting them and everything. So, that's looking real good. And the sidewalks on both sides, all the way from Lamy up to the bridge, are almost complete as far as being cleaned up. And that's made a lot of people happy, received a lot of good complaints about that. I want to thank the administration for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Glavine.
Yeah, I'm gonna kick it off with some feel-good events that occurred this weekend. And first is Fofa Slavic Invitational Tournament. A lot of hard-working men and women. Shout out to the Women's Auxiliary or the Slavic Women for all the hard work they did to try to facilitate over 800 men and try to get them fed and all that good stuff. I tell you, the kickoff event at Point Cadet Pavilion, the weather couldn't have been any better for that evening, and it was really good. And we also had a little gathering at the Ground Zero. Got to listen to Fofa tickle the keys a little bit and even sing. What was the name of the band we had?
Buck Down All-Stars.
Yeah, yeah, what a traditional, very popular band. We had a good time that evening. And I gotta say, it was a great event. And I'm sure they'll be coming back again like they always do. We followed that up with another weekend event, Smoke in the Coast. Inaugural event, I'm sure the storm affected some teams coming from North Carolina and Florida and Georgia. But it was still good attendance. And, I mean, the whole great lawn at Harrah's, you could smell the pigs roasting. And got to get a few samples. And it was a good family-oriented event with some live entertainment out there as well. Like to echo what Councilman McGilvery said, along Pops Ferry Road, it's looking real good. They got a couple of sections to finish, you know, as they work in and around the entire city. And really appreciate that as well. And with that, that'll conclude my report for today.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
For something, I know they had their hands full and were busy already. And they were to get to it and get everything done when I acquired, requested date. So, I appreciate that. I know they had a lot going and they were able to get it done for me. So, thank you to them. Next month, or no, I'm sorry, the 19th of this month, we have Trunk or Treats, Evil Point Park. It's gonna be October 19th at 6:00 PM. The last couple of years, I think the event's gotten a lot bigger. Hopefully, it's gonna be even bigger this year. Hopefully, there's a, I'm sorry, there's a form that has to be filled out, registration form. Hoping to get more vendors out there and more participants. Lots and lots of kids come out from all through Wool Market. Great event. So, if anybody's interested, we can, it's online, there's that registration form online or through Public Works Department. You can call with any questions. And lastly, I had a couple of phone calls last week regarding the old brick house. It had been rented, we rented it out for an event, I think for a wedding. And prior to the wedding, they were setting up, I guess, the people getting married and their family. And unfortunately, the grass hadn't been cut out there. And I just throw this out there, you know I'm grass and grass cutting a lot. But I think in the future, if we're gonna rent these buildings out for different functions and events, we need to do what we can, get the grass cut and get it looking good. I mean, I know they're paying and they're having this particular thing, I believe, was a wedding. And I just think that if we're gonna rent them out, we should probably get in there, clean them up, cut the grass, make sure they look good for the people that are actually spending money to rent out the facilities. And that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I have several things. First is just a reminder, our next council meeting, which is two weeks from tonight, there's another personnel report due on the vacancy by department and so forth. Also, there's a leaning tree on the north side of Runny Meat Drive. And I've been following up with Craig Ross on that. And Mr. Creel, I don't know, somebody said they were gonna check with Zach to see if he was gonna... I don't know whose property the tree is on. I don't know if it's in the city's right of way.
I think it is.
Okay, but it's, the folks out there have been nervous about it for several months, and I've reported several times. But it needs to be looked at, and if we can take it down, it needs to be taken down. Thank you. Do we have a fiscal year 2023 audit yet? Do we expect it sometime next couple of weeks?
Yep, hopefully.
You're always expecting it, right?
Been expecting it, yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mike, I don't know, Christie's not here. Do you know if any funds remain in the Causeway Pier project? I know they pulled up the old pier that was destroyed in one of the hurricanes and...
I think demolition.
Christie's out of town. I don't know if there are any funds available left in there. And if so, would any portion of that pier, remember, it was a circular pier, will any of that be replaced or...
No, I think the demolition was, that has taken place was the last part of that. And there was no reconstruction of any of that. It was just to make it, rehab the remaining pier so people could walk in in a safe manner.
Gotcha, so there's nothing...
It was a tidlance grant.
Right.
May have...
If there's any money left, it has to roll back to the tidlance unless we...
Okay.
Put it into another project.
That's, that's fine. So, there are no plans to replace any section of the pier? It's just to remove what was damaged and destroyed?
Make the remainder safe.
Stable, okay, thank you for that. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank all my constituents. I'd like to thank all my constituents and city officials who came out to my ward meeting Tuesday of last week. We had a good turnout. And there's now a video and a summary of that ward meeting on my website. Mr. Lawrence? Wait, I don't know who you're talking to, but we can hear you over here. So, I'm about to finish my report, thank you. And I would also like to, again, echo the welcome to the Mayor's Youth Council. Sometimes this meeting gets exciting and sometimes, it's like church. Sometimes it gets exciting and your ears go up and your eyes are wide open. And sometimes, you just want to sleep through part of it. But that's the way the city's business works, right? That's half the fun. Pull up a chair to the edge of the precipice, right? All right, that concludes council comments. That brings us to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll allot up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the council. And when you come forward, when you're recognized, just have a seat at the table. Be sure and sign in on the sign-in sheet there at the table. And I think the mic is on, I think I see a green light from here. And you may have to get close to the microphone because it's not just for us, it's for the whole world that's watching on the internet later when we put this online. That having been said, I'll start on my right, your left. Anybody on this side of the room wish to address the council? Mr. Silvestro?
I am on a mission. Hi, everybody, I'm Bob. I want to thank everyone, the mayor, for basically having an open-door policy, getting our issues addressed. I know it's very tough to be a politician and get things done, but I have some neighbors here, we've got a lot of them together. And the fact is that we are in the, a bad zone at the corner or the Greater Biloxi subdivision. It starts with a methadone clinic who isn't playing by the rules. Our Lady of Fatima Church, I've asked them to be responsible for the people they feed. Or the city has taken the time to clean the area up, and some folks come right out of there and just dump their trash everywhere. As far as the property owners, there are dozens of people living west of Iris Street. Iris, I ran into two fellows that were from Venezuela the other day. There is drug activity, it's unbelievable. The owner of that property was in there a week ago, and he didn't report anybody being there. So, I'm just here to tell the facts. Everyone knows where I live. We need help. It's gotten much worse in our neighborhood. There are some people that really need a hand up also. But you have an area there where you're attracting very dangerous people to that area. I was working out at my house, a lot of people have come by and seen the work we've done to our house, we have neighbors fixing up. We had, just last week, during the day, 15 first responder calls to my block. Now, I admit, some of it was because of neighbors that are older and sick, but most of it was involving a violent incident involving someone who didn't live at that address. I only go by what I see. People don't want to press charges. I'm just telling you, I sat out there for an hour today and watched 30 people go in and out of that woods that were not good people. So, whatever we need to do, whatever pressure needs to be done, that woods needs to be cleaned up immediately, immediately. That's all I have to say. I thank everyone for their support, and I'd like to say a prayer for Chief Miller and his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my right, your left, that wishes to speak?
Hi, Amanda Croce with Elliott Holmes. I'm here representing two projects on the agenda for tonight under the policy agenda, items 4E and 4F. Myself and Brandon Elliott are both here tonight if anybody has any questions on either one. On the item 4E for Coral Breeze, just want to note that it was approved on August the 6th for a PDI, a planned development infill district. Coupled with the preliminary subdivision, we're here tonight requesting final plat approval for that one. For 4F, Monarch Villas, same thing, it's approved on August 27th as a planned development commercial district, both coupled with a subdivision. Where both of them actually are utilities and the roadways are all private, and HOA will maintain all of those. For any additional questions, we're both here to answer anything when it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Croce. Anybody else on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am. Whoop, we have two ma'ams coming up. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carrie, I'm in the Greater Biloxi subdivision.
Carrie, what's your last name? The clerk has to get your name, please.
Miles.
Miles, Carrie, thank you.
I had sent an email to everybody up here today and the mayor, and I want to thank you for responding back with some updates on what's going on. But one of the questions I have is, in that response, it says that we are continuing to encourage Roy Anderson to continue cleaning up. What does that actually mean, encourage? I mean, you're like, here's a gold star for what you've done already? I mean, he, at the last meeting in September, we were told that that west side was gonna start on the 19th, and we haven't seen anything over there. So, my question was just, what does that mean by encourage him? You know, like, what are you actually doing to encourage him to keep continuing the cleanup?
It's not a question and answer time, it's just a time to comment. But your comments are noted, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Miles, yes, ma'am.
Carrie Harrell, and I'm from Greater Biloxi also.
If you say your name again, so the clerk...
Carrie Harrell. First off, I am impressed with what they've already done over there with the east side and the ballpark, but there's still people going in and out of the ballpark also. I got pictures of that. Also, there's a lot of people going in and out of the woods, like they already said. Then people are coming out with machetes, walking up and down the street, slinging them like they're killing somebody in the air. They're punching the air, cussing people out. If you look at them, they want to ask you, what are you looking at? I want to know, I mean, I know you, it's not a question and answer, but I would like answers on when my son can go back outside and play in the yard. Because this, it's not happening when, y'all are saying there's only one person living there, and there's a lot going in and out of there, a lot. It did slow down for a couple of days when they were doing that on the east side. It slowed down a little bit. I guess they were going out another way or whatever, I don't know. But they're still coming up and down through there. They can say they're not, but they are.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Harrell. Anybody else on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Lori Silvestro. I also live in the Greater Biloxi subdivision. I don't want to repeat what everybody else was saying, but I will confirm that we still have that problem on the west side woods of that Broadwater property. And we see a lot of foot traffic, bicycle traffic coming through the neighborhood from the golf course side down greater, down southern. These people are living in there, going through there and cutting through our neighborhood to get to other points, okay? And we're see, we still see new people. It's not the same people all the time. We're starting to see new people. So, the word is still out there within that network that our area is a soft target for people to come, settle in the woods, go to the methadone clinic, get free food at Our Lady of Fatima, and have a walk to the beach. So, it's the perfect setting for them. If I was in their situation, I'd take advantage of it too. But it affects the safety and well-being of our neighborhood. It's got to be addressed. And if it means, I don't understand how complex it is to go after the property owners. The property owners, the developers who have been sitting on this land for years and not doing anything about it. They're the ones who let it get to this point. They're the ones who need to clean it up regardless of the cost. And then, once that's taken care of, maybe we can, as Biloxians, start to heal and focus on what's really important, like mental health resources and other outreach resources for people in need. But the people in our area, they're not from Biloxi, they're coming from all over the place. Because word is out there that we're the soft target. It's got to get taken care of. The landowners have to take care of this, and they have to pay. That's the bottom line, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Silvestro. Ms. Lally? We're finally getting you up here.
All right, good evening. My name is Wendy Lally, live at 324 Fabry Drive. I have a few things I wanted to speak on. I'm coming here on behalf of some of my residents, that neighbors that live in Edgewater Estates. The new Cotton, WC Cotton Ford Parkway is going literally behind our neighbors on Westview. Construction is starting to ramp up. These neighbors are having pictures shaking, their mirrors are shaking, their windows are shaking, their pets are scared. This road is so close to their house that we're worried, you know, that utility lines might get hurt, water lines might get broken. And it's just, you know, it's extremely loud. I hope they're working during normal business hours and not at night or early in the morning. It's just become problematic for those neighbors on Westview. And I was just asked to come and speak on their behalf. Next, this is irony, that at Dr. Tisdale's Ward Five meeting, I mentioned about the infrastructure in Edgewater Estates and the sinkholes. This Monday, yesterday, I came home to a sinkhole, three houses... This Monday, yesterday, I came home to a sinkhole three houses down the road. The city is working on it, it's not an issue of the city working on it, it's the city puts Band-Aids on these things. We need to find the money, find the, find the way, the resources to fix Edgewater Estates. It's bad. I have a neighbor who lives at the end of Lakeview, his wife is, has some health issues and ambulance, she cannot handle an ambulance ride up their street. The street is so bumpy and that's unacceptable, just unacceptable. So I thank you for taking your time and attention to handle this matter. So lastly, I just wanted to remind everyone, in two days, on Thursday, October 3rd, at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, there's a tree hearing at the Planning Commission to vote whether or not the Tree Committee recommendations will be approved or not. Applicant Chris Rains, he's asking to have 12 protected live oak trees on that property cut down. For those watching the video here or those in attendance, the property is at 309 and 308 Moffett Road on Pass Road. I actually got a street sign installed with y'all's help, so people knew where it was, but it's kind of across from Taco Bell on Pass Road there in West Biloxi. But anyway, Mr. Rains is coming to the Planning Commission to have, ask for permission and permits to have 12 protected live oak trees cut down. In exchange for cutting those trees down, he wants to put in 53 small cottages and tentatively refers to his project as the cottages and Moffett Road. If anyone has comments or concerns or questions they want to bring up, the public is welcome to come to that Planning Commission meeting. It is an open forum, open public meeting, and I would encourage anyone in the community that needs to be there. It's at 676 Martin Luther King Boulevard, this Thursday, October 3rd, 2:00 PM in the Community Development Auditorium. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lally. Anybody else on my right, your left? Mr. Fusco?
I'm Jared Fusco from 435 Cove Drive. On 8th February 2015, an article was published in the Sun Herald titled, "The Tree Committee Should Have A Real Voice In Biloxi Development," which referred to Biloxi as a tree city that needed to protect trees for our children and grandchildren, which, it's great to see there's many of them here today. This title is further reinforced by the Arbor Day Foundation, which has designated Biloxi as Tree City USA for over 40 years. The same article, which was published as the city sought to update ordinances to reestablish Biloxi's Tree Committee, made the following request. "We ask that the Tree Protection Committee be more, be made more than advisory in nature and that it be made an integral part of the process in obtaining permits to build in Biloxi. We ask that the committee have more proactive role in the process rather than be relegated to advisory in nature and purpose." This article was signed by well-respected members of our community, Dionne Newer, Sherry Munter, Arlen Canon, Gwen Galette, Vincent Creel, Therese Collins, and notably Gerald Blessie, former mayor of Biloxi, and Jerry Creel, current Director of Community Development. Many trees in this historic city have survived much longer than homes and businesses that used to sit next to them. Many of our majestic oaks and magnificent magnolias have existed before our births and the births of our, birth of our country. Their limbs may be new, but their worn and scarred trunks reveal a resilience that many residents of this city share as survivors of Hurricane Camille and Katrina. In 2016, City Council approved an ordinance that reestablished Biloxi's Tree Committee and gave them various advisory-related tasks. However, they were not yet to check and balance to the ardently pro-development Planning Commission that the public was calling for. That would not come until 2022. In 2022, City Council voted unanimously to update tree protection-related ordinances to include, most notably, the entire replacement of the tree permits section. The Tree Committee was given the power to recommend approval, denial, and mitigation requirements for tree permits that impact five or more protected trees, and when the Planning Commission's recommendation disagrees with theirs, the conflict must be reported to the mayor within two days, wherein he may or she makes the final decision. In the coming weeks, it is likely that I will be in front of you again to make a case to overturn a decision on an appeal for a tree permit to remove 12 live oaks of various ages and sizes near Pop's Ferry Elementary. As a wise man once told me, "Learning occurs at the edge of frustration." I ask that you get frustrated, read Supreme Court rulings, read the laws of our city, ask your constituents to do the same. It takes a well-informed community to build a culture and a heritage. It will take one to defend it just the same. Thank you for your time as always and I look forward to seeing you again soon. And I have provided a copy of this speech to the clerk. It's titled, "Biloxi Tree Committee: Preserving Culture And Heritage." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Anybody else on my right, your left wish to comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Angela Ward and I live at 321 Porter Avenue. And I agree with most of these people here, especially about the methadone clinic. It would be nice if y'all would somehow make that disappear. And instead of going after the little people, we got police officers who have a lot of money, a lot of money. Why ain't they surveilling the ones that are giving these homeless people the drugs and going after them? Y'all keep picking up the homeless people, but you're not going after the big fish that's actually doing it. If y'all did that and removed the thing from the methadone clinic, from the area, that would clean up a bunch of our problem. I know the drug business, you make a lot of money in that. They make a lot of money at that methadone clinic for the city, a lot. But what is it doing to our community? I've been here before the casinos were even here. I remember before they were here. It was nice then, it was a good place to come to. Since 2016, I've watched our city decline so bad that even on my street, nicer areas, you're seeing these homeless people running around everywhere. You're making the drugs accessible, you're not charging the people that are bringing the drugs to these people, but you're charging the people that are doing it. You need to get after the big fish. Want to clean up our community, that's the way to do it. And I wish y'all would please do something different because I'm watching people that I wouldn't think dying on Fentanyl. I'm tired of seeing it. I see it here, up and down the beach, what, one week, I think 10 people died? That's, it's insane. But no one's doing anything to get the big fish. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lord. Mr. Creel?
Just for the record, I'd like to clarify that that was not I who signed that document. That was Vincent Creel's father, Jerry Creel, that signed the document that Mr. Fusco was talking about, so.
Okay, thank you. Good point, Mr. Creel. Anybody else on my left, excuse me, on my right, your left, that wishes to comment? Anybody on my left, your right wish to comment? Anybody in the back? Ms. Hunt? You'd like to comment? Keep it brief. Come up to the microphone, state your name, we want to get it for the record. You may need an alibi later.
Susan Hunt.
I just want to make a comment that the Mayor's Youth Council, my children, we are going to be leaving very quietly because we have backup stairs to discuss and then do an evaluation. So I just wanted you to know that's why we're here, so. The city, thank you very much. I know that my children learned a great deal tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. And thank you all who are participating in the Mayor's Youth Council. We'll give you a second to exit. Go ahead. That brings us to the policy agenda. The clerk would read item A.
Ordinance to amend section 16.5 Storm Water Management Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances.
All right, I'll move it. There's a motion by Mr. Glavine.
I'll second.
There's a second by Mr. Guines. This is a first hearing, so it's a procedural matter. We'll move to the next item, item B.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances pertaining to mobile food vending.
The motion was made by Mr. McGilvery and the second was made by Mr. Guines. Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Guines, any comments?
Yeah, Peter, could you give us a little overview of the mobile food vending, the little changes, your Rachel?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you know, and we've passed this and we've talked about, we can always look to make it stricter or make it looser. And what we've done here is kind of in line with Councilman Glavine, we had an amendment on the last time to-
Right.
If you're a brick and mortar business, to not have a food truck within a certain distance of your already existing restaurant. So what we found in some things like First Friday or whatnot, we had some local businesses that wanted to set up their truck or whatever and it was not, didn't feel as fair to charge them a full permit-type fee. So if you have a brick and mortar business in Biloxi, you're able to attend festivals throughout the year for $100, which is a reduced price, half of what the normal fee is, I think, or maybe a third, and also allows you to participate in special events without having to go through the process.
Okay, basically, we're just making an extension of their business.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're promoting our local businesses if you want to-
Put it that way.
If you've got a brick and mortar business, then your food truck permit fee is much less.
Great, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Shoemaker, any comments or questions on this item? Okeydoke, so we'll, we'll call, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance amendment as presented? We'll start with Mr. Lawrence. If you cast your vote, Mr. Lawrence.
Nay.
Mr. Lawrence, nay. Mr. Guines?
Guines, yea.
All right.
McGilvery, yea.
Tisdale, yea.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yea.
Okay, so that's a 6-1 vote, Mr. Lawrence in opposition. If the clerk would read the next item, please, item C.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances pertaining to compensation schedule and pay rates.
I made the motion and the second was by Mr. Glavine. And I'd spoken with the mayor, there were several position titles that were deleted. Among them, for example, grant writer, GIS technician, personnel assistant, executive planner, and in speaking with the mayor, these positions were deleted because they're currently vacant now. But not only that, a number of the titles have been restructured and in fact, a lot of these titles were hybrid structures, so, or hybrid titled positions as responsibilities were combined, so I'm, I mean, I'm comfortable with that. Other than that, I have no comment. Mr. Glavine?
I have no further comment.
All right, any questions or comments? Mr. Lawrence, any question or comment? Mr. Shoemaker?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay. There being no further or additional comments or questions for discussion, all in favor of the ordinance as presented. Mr. Lawrence?
Guines, yea.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
Okay, that's a 7-0 vote for the clerk, thank you. That brings us to item D. These, the next several are resolutions. If the clerk would read item D, please.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plot approval for 9201 Wool Market Road.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Guines. All right, Mr. Shoemaker, you're welcome to comment.
There, there's, there's an existing house on the property and they're wanting to basically just subdivide it, to have a house on the property, on one parcel, excuse me, and have another parcel maybe to put another house in the future. And I do support it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Guines, any comments?
No, no comment.
Any council members have questions or comments on this item? There being none, cast your vote and be sure to mention your name so we get it all down. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, so it passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to item E. The clerk would read item E.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plot approval for a 38 lots residential subdivision development known as Coral Breeze for 1654 Beach Boulevard.
I'll entertain a motion.
George?
I'll move it. Unless George want to move it.
Okay, let's see.
George, move it.
Mr. Lawrence, you said something-
Yeah, this is what we've been fighting for two years. Five different resolutions. They're all over the table.
George, do you want to move it?
We're, we're, we need a motion and a second. Did you want to make a motion for discussion?
I moved it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. And a second by Mr. Guines. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence, the floor is yours.
Yes. I said, we've been fighting it for two years, October of '22. Five different resolutions, five different turning, putting them together, separating, add this, do that. Nothing ever made sense, nothing ever explained to the council. And we've built a little bit of homes up there. I don't see where we're going with this. I can't finalize anything because to me, there was nothing ever finalized that's talked with. I know it's the same group that's two in a row, and we talking about Elliot Holmes is building these things, but it's enterprise group. But I mean, there's nothing on the table that ever explained this from the beginning, ever. And every time we turn around, they changed it. So I don't know, can y'all hear me good enough?
Yeah, we can hear you. We're waiting for you to finish.
So no, I cannot support this at all. I just think this is something that we're not, we don't really need in the city of Biloxi. First of all, but I just don't, I don't agree with anything that happened here for two years, 24 months of flipping all over the place. So I can't support this at all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines, comment?
Yeah, I have no problem with it. 38 lots residential subdivision development in the Coral Breeze, I think it's a great opportunity and I will support it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this matter? Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, 24 months, there had been changes, some of them requested by councilmen on this council and the developer has made an effort to make things happen or honor some requests by this council directly. So I think it has moved in the right direction. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Guines, that it's, it's needed, there's demand for it. The developer has a good reputation and I think it'll be marketed appropriately and it'll have a good economic benefit in the location that it'll be developed in.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. All right, we'll call for the question.
Oh.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Let's get something straight. Kenny made that statement. This was after a long hard fall, we were supposed to do, and I don't know, was ever made or changed. Made these statements, but I've never seen anything in writing that was changed. Yeah, we request a few things, to take the lots, make them bigger, not being 874 square foot lots. And that's what they asked them to do. Now, whether they did that or not, put the backyards and everything together, I have no clue. But I've never seen a resolution with all that written in it. So don't make that statement, Kenny. If it's not in a resolution, it's not fact. So it's never written in a resolution that we voted on. So pay attention what's going on. And I was, a great idea, it's a great idea for who? And if the need, where's the need? Nobody ever proved one fact that we needed those type of homes in the city of Biloxi, nobody.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any, any other comments? There being none, we'll call for the question. Mr. Lawrence, your vote?
Lawrence, nay.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, no.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, so, so the resolution passes on a 5-2 vote, you caught the two in opposition. opposition, Lawrence and Tisdale. Thank you. That brings us to item F. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plat approval for a 25 lot single-family residential subdivision titled Monarch Villas at 955 Motzy Road.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine, comments?
Yeah, you know, and this development is interesting because when it was first announced, I had some significant questions, you know, is it appropriate, is, you know, is the size too small, et cetera? And as I obtained more information, learned what the development, developer was going to do, I've kind of followed this project, and it really fits. In fact, I've had numerous constituents voice their interest in the property. Every day that I ride by there, it's just interesting to see it come together, and they're, they're in the final stages, actually, of construction. It, it's going to fit nicely in this area. Now, I will say this, there was a question raised recently on a variance that may have been granted, that went through planning. And for those of you who don't know, there's two procedural, or a couple of procedural issues. A planning commission can open their session and make recommendations or suggestions, and those recommendations and suggestions come to this council for final approval. When they're dealing with a variance in this case, they actually reviewed it as the zoning board of adjustments and appeals. And if someone appeals that decision, it goes to justice court. I'm sorry, circuit court. And, and that's the avenue that has to be followed. It does not come to this body to challenge any decision to grant a variance. So procedural, procedures were followed appropriately, and I look forward to this property being very successful. In fact, I see numerous sold signs. It looks like they've marketed and they've already sold some of these units, starting at 200,000. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines, comments?
Yes, I too went, drove by there. I saw the development. I saw the progress. It's looking very, very good. And I'm encouraged by Councilman Glavine and all the homework he did as far as making sure everything was done decent and in order. So I'm going to also support it. Thank you.
All right, out there, any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, I have a question. It's five acres, and I don't know, that went to the zoning board, and they eliminated 3.5 acres as a variance. The council was never, ever told about that, ever. It was never written in a resolution. It's not written in a resolution on the table tonight. So where you get this from, 3.5? Where's that from? Where's it written at? Where's that city attorney? Somebody need to explain to me, the city council bypassed this whole thing. And I don't care if zoning board or no zoning board, you can't eliminate three and a half acres on a, and just pass it and say, that's good, and never tell the council, because we voted on, had nothing to do with the 3.5 acre variance. Never was written in there anyway. And I'm tired of telling you all that. The only voting on was written in those resolution. And that's not in there, that's not in there tonight. So no, this should not be put on the table. This should be done, it pulled off, wrote the right way, if that's what they want to do, but it's got to be all put together in a resolution and sent back to the council at a later date. That's the proper way to do it. Otherwise, you just voting on whatever you want to vote on. Laws don't mean anything, LDO don't mean anything, comprehensive plans don't mean anything. I mean, you got to pay attention to what's going on. We set the laws in the city. We pay the bills. That's our job. We've never informed on this from anybody, not one person. So no, I cannot support this either. This is the worst thing on the table. It's not right. And let me tell you something else, Kenny, they can't sell anything until this is the final plat approved. They have no right to sell anything individually until the final plat is approved. So what they sold, they wasn't fully understood.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Does Mr. Shoemaker have a comment or question? Do we know?
I do not.
No.
He's okay. All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented, starting with Mr. Lawrence?
I'd like to recommend that we table this until they write the right resolution, put it together, and send it back to the council.
All right, so.
Time for them to put it together. Write in the matters that they did, and when they voted that, and when they passed it in there, it ought to be listed in a resolution. So all I'm asking y'all to do is to send it back, and have them rewrite the resolution correctly, then send it back to us. So I'm asking that table for that reason.
All right, so Mr. Lawrence is asking for a motion to table this item. Is there a second? I'll make that second. Any further discussion on tabling this motion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
So, so I have a question first, for Peter. Is it within the proper authority for the, for the zoning board to take the action that they did to grant a variance or to not grant a variance? Yeah, under, under the LDO 2323F, it talks that the morning, BZA, the Board of Zoning and Adjustments, they can, they can deal with administrative relief, and they can hold a public hearing to discuss a variance. So it's my understanding in this case, they applied for a variance. It was advertised, there was a public hearing. The, this board, the BZA, it's the same, it's nine members, I think, of the planning commission, or all the planning commission? Okay, all 15 of the planning commission. They recessed the planning commission and they go into the, the BZA meeting. And they argued or made their presentation before the BZA at that time. And as I see here, that was a, was that a 15-0 vote on the variance, Jerry? Okay. So at that point, they had a variance since no one appealed it.
Yep.
And as I read this, it just states that the planning commission then came and, on this, this motion, voted to approve the plat, or the plan.
Okay.
So the variance technically has already been given. It's already a property right, I think they own at this point. So I appreciate that, Counselor. So my point is this, we do have rules that we, we follow. The zoning board followed proper procedures. There was a hearing that was duly advertised. There is an appeal process that they can appeal. No one appealed this process. And now it sits before us as the plat, final plat approval. So things were done properly, rules were followed, and I don't think we need to hold this up in more red tape to encumber the developer further. There is no one here tonight, you know, even after the appeal and this comes before us that is trying to challenge this as well. And I would ask my colleagues to kind of see it for what it is and, and support this.
I'd like to make a point of order.
Go ahead, Mr. Guines.
We had actually called for the question, and then we just decided to just undo that and just go ahead and try to put it on the table, to table it. And I thought that that was inappropriate at the time. I was trying to be patient and wait to my time, but we had already called for the question and started our voting process, and now we just abandoned it. So for the sake of this board here, I think we need to be, get back in order. That's just my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. But I'd put you on the spot here. Is there any reason we can't, cannot consider the motion to table this at this time? Just a mo, just a moment, George.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't personally hear. I mean, I don't doubt that it was put on the table. I mean, it was, the question was called, since I didn't hear it, and rather than going back and trying to listen to the tape, if, if, if the question was called, Mr. Guines is correct, but.
All right, so, so we could have a motion to reconsider, which is what we did two weeks ago for Mr. Guines, correct?
Yes.
George, you want to make a motion to reconsider?
Yes, I do.
All right, I'll second that motion to reconsider. So before the vote, we'll reconsider this, and now there's a, is there a motion to table this, George?
Yes, I would move it to table it.
All right.
You'd have to vote on the motion to reconsider.
I'm sorry.
We'd have to vote on that motion to reconsider.
All right, we do. Thank you. All in favor of the motion to reconsider? Reconsider this question that we started with a motion. We went through all of this two weeks ago, but I'm trying to be consistent with what we did two weeks ago when Mr. Guines argued the other side of this issue. Go ahead, George, vote on the motion to reconsider. We have to, we have to vote on this. Yes, Mr. Guines?
No.
McGilvery, no.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, nay.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, no.
Okay, so the, the motion to reconsider fails. That being the case, we'll take up the motion to approve this resolution as presented. We had a motion by Mr. Glavine and a second by Mr. Guines. We've discussed that. We'll call for the question at this point. Mr. Lawrence, your vote, please?
Lawrence, vote nay, because obviously our rules mean absolutely nothing at this board.
Guines, yes.
Means nothing.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, no.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. All right, George, questions on any items on the consent agenda?
Yes, a couple. On H and J, with an HI, it's, the purpose was, we changing the budget 130, 154,000 and 39,000, two in a row. That's just a big change at the 2025. What is that, 190,000?
Councilman, this is a very typical situation at the end of a fiscal year. Sometimes equipment doesn't come in, and that's what happens. In this case, the tractor, which is item H, the tractor, the tractor was ordered back in October of 2023, and it has just come in. And will, will be in this next fiscal year unless, unless, unless we allow them to order it now, to pay it now. And the other item is a pickup truck, which was ordered in May and has, has not come in. So both of those items would be lost. We'd have to start from scratch unless we roll those over. This is, this is, happens every fiscal year. We try and minimize it. We also try and hold it to vehicles and equipment that were previously ordered well in, early in the year. We tried, and we'll try again this year to get people to order their equipment and trucks and so forth as early as possible, so that they have time to get, to get it in. But sometimes best, just, sometimes it just shit happens.
Where, where's this, where's John Major with the, with the button there? All right, we're going viral this week on the internet, right there. That's your viral moment.
Ordered that tractor in September, or in October of 2023. They've been waiting for it all this time.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, anything else?
I said, no, what I was going to say, was that budget in '23 for these two items? No, was it budgeted for these two items?
Well, as I understand it, it was in, in the fiscal year 2024 budget, and it was ordered a number of months before the end of the fiscal year, and these two items were never delivered. So that money was, went back to the general fund, and it's going to be delivered now, so we're going to pay for them now.
So they actually had the money allocated for these two items?
It's in the budget for '24. We just carried this over. Now that these items are going to be delivered, we have to add this money, which was carried over into fiscal year '25, into, into this year's budget. So, and it, it happens, as Mr. Leonard said, on a number of items every year, no matter how, how well you planned for this. Stop, watch it, watch it. All right, any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, oh, the resolution that, the Main Street, I heard it was going to non-departamental 50,000. That was supposed to be explained by the mayor, which we never heard anything. They just received 600,000. So what are we giving them 50,000 for? The Gulf Coast Main Street.
It was, it was, it was approved, it was approved in the, as a non-departmental item in this year's budget. Mr. Lawrence wants to know what they're going to use the.
It's 50,000.
The money for.
Explained by the mayor is all it had said. But nobody ever explained anything to us.
Oh, hi, Kay, come on, sorry. A voice, a voice in the back of the room said, "I'm here. Thank you for being here, Kay." All right, Mr. Lawrence, Kay Miller's here.
Okay, I'll just go over a few things that we spend our money on. Currently, we are purchasing $30,000 worth of banners for the city streets. It will be Christmas banners, cruising banners, and Fourth of July banners that desperately need replacing. So that's $30,000 we're spending. We are about to spend $75,000 on some wayfinding signage, some signage for throughout the entire downtown. We spend about $50,000 a year just on First Fridays and events that we do. We are spending $20,000 sprucing up the Green House Alley. We just spent $25,000 on painting the columns under the interstate and pressure washing them. We are proposing to spend $50,000 more on extending the painting, the columns in Phase Two section that, that are just beyond north of the railroad tracks. And we spent $7,500 on new trash receptacle bags, holders that are about to be installed. So I'm not adding that up, but I think that adds up to way more than $50,000. We do have grants for some of those things, but many of the things that we do benefit the entire city, it's, I mean, the banners, the street signs, the painting and cleaning of the columns, the trash bags, and a lot of things that the city is really benefiting from that we're doing.
Right, I think we talked about Christmas decorations today.
Yes, and we're going to hopefully purchase some more Christmas decorations. I have a meeting with the mayor tomorrow to plan that.
All right, anything else on that item, Mr. Lawrence?
Y'all received a grant of $600,000. You're not spending any of that money on that?
No, we have not received the grant for $600,000 yet. That's MMSRG funds that is coming from the state. We have not received that yet, but that's going to strictly go on for LED lighting. We're going to light as much as we can up under the interstate to hopefully resemble how the Birmingham interstates look at City Place. But that money will strictly, all, every bit of it will be used for lighting, but we have not received it yet. I'm not sure when we will, hopefully soon.
Okay, is that, anything else, Mr. Lawrence, on that topic?
So I'm just trying to see what we doing with all that money, that's all.
Okay. Any other items, Mr. Lawrence? Thank you, Kay.
That's it.
All right, Mr. Guines, anything?
I have none.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery? I have none. Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, okay. So we'll call for the question on approving the consent agenda, and we'll note the exceptions immediately following. All in favor of the consent agenda, if you would state your name and your vote?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
Shoemaker, yes. That's a seven-o vote for the clerk. Are there any exceptions? Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, none.
None.
Okay.
Guines, none.
All right, so on item R, you're abstaining. So, on item R, you're abstaining.
I'm good at that.
Mr. McGilvery?
McGilvery, none.
Tisdale, none.
Glavin, none.
Shoemaker, none.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to one of my favorite parts of the agenda, code enforcement. Highlight, the highlight of the... I'm telling you. Yeah. All right. Uh, Mr. Creel, um, if you would, it's, it's all yours.
All right. Item A, Catherine M. Alexander et al., care of Jesse Matthews, 434 Haydenham Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item, item B, Boys Club of the Gulf Coast Incorporated, 282 Deloney Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, Matthew P. Couson, 416 Richmond Drive. That case has been resolved. Item D, WC4, 201 Fifth Street. Ms. Four called me right before the meeting and said that it has been cut. I didn't have a chance to go down there, so I would ask for 30 days and we'll verify that.
All right. There's a motion for 30 days on item D.
So, move.
All right. So, there's a motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Glavin. Any discussion? All in favor? State your name and your vote.
Guines, yes.
Guines, yes.
Newman, yes. McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavin, yea.
Shoemaker?
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. Don't fall asleep at the wheel now just 'cause you're in a different time zone. Uh, thank you. Okay. That's a 7-0 vote for the clerk. Continue with item E, Mr. Creel.
Item E, Kurt Garrity, Zero Kensington Drive. That case has been resolved. Item F, Boo Din Ho and Louis Tran et al., 452 Howard Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item G, Brenda Hazard and Kelvin Lamar Lee, 416 Haydenham Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item H, Chow Yan Go, 271 Keller Avenue. Uh, we would ask for 30 days on that property, too. They are working on it.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
Mr. Guines, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. McGilvery. All right. Any discussion? All in favor? If you would, state your name and your vote.
Guines, yes.
Newman, yes. McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavin, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. Thank you all. Continue, Mr. Creel, with item L.
Item, excuse me, item I. Item I, Sylvester Pittman Estate, care of Portia Pittman, 245 Lee Street. That case has been resolved. Item J, Charlie N. Ponzo, 183 Claiborne Street. That case has been resolved. Item K, Charlie N. Ponzo, 192 Claiborne Street. That case has been resolved. Item L, Charlie N. Ponzo, 196 Claiborne Street. That case has been resolved. Item M, Charles N. Ponzo, 185 Dory Street. That case has been resolved. Item N, Charles N. Ponzo, 191 Dory Street. That case has been resolved. Item O, South Central Bell Telephone Company, Zero Howard Avenue. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on this matter of, uh, an unnumbered parcel on Howard Avenue, South Central Bell Telephone Company? There being no one, this matter is closed.
Item P, Winfield S. Swetman Jr., 430 Haydenham Avenue. That case has been resolved. Item Q, Coastal Development Group Incorporated, 408 Pearl Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to represent or speak for Coastal Development Group on the parcel 408 Pearl Avenue? This hearing is closed.
Item R, Lenis L. Coleman Estate, 1630 Pringle Circle. This property is still in violation.
Is anybody here to speak on the matter of 1630 Pringle Circle, Lenis L. Coleman Estate? There being no one, this hearing is closed.
Item S, Lauren Simpson, 1109 DeSoto Street. That case has been resolved.
It may be my imagination, Mr. Creel, but it seems like more and more of these are resolved before the council than, than has been the case in the past, so...
The only problem is they wait until right before the meeting to resolve.
I know. Thank, thank you and your staff for staying on top of that. I'll entertain a motion to consider the routine agenda.
So, move.
Mr. Guines, a second by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines, anything?